I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Secretary for Former-oral call attendance, please.
Here.
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 Here. Here. Okay. All the board members that received the minutes from the June 3 meeting.
Make a motion accept.
Okay, motions made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, motion carries. Okay. So our first item on the agenda this evening is Subin LLC subdivision.
Mike Bodendorf, Engineering for the applicant. Since the last meeting, we made changes to the plans in response to Mr. Andrews' comment letter. Just a quick rundown of those. We provided additional information with the wetland permit. We provided inverts on the existing culverts that exist on Widmer Road and out of the wetland. We provided a swell detail. We increased the drainage easement to 30 feet. And as part of that, we shifted the swell over because the drainage easement sits against this lot. So everything just got shifted over a little, so it's centered within that easement. We added language on the subdivision plat in relation to the easements that we're proposing as part of the subdivision. And added some notation about cleaning out the existing culvert out of the wetland. There's additional notation with regard to the site, the site distance easements. And we did add a owner's consent note to the subdivision plat, but I realized that it came in on a, it's a CAD issue, it came in on a layer that doesn't show up, so it's on the plan in CAD, but it doesn't show up in the print, so I fixed that already. That's something that the Health Department would comment on anyway, so eventually that would be addressed.
Okay.
And just circling back to the wetland permit, I don't know if the board has the ability to waive one of the components of that permit, which is a wetland report that discusses impacts and the existing conditions of the wetland. We're asking if the board can waive that, and if they can't, we're asking if it could be a condition of approval.
As we were reviewing earlier, I guess it doesn't mention anything in there about a waiver, correct?
Yeah. I don't believe the Planning Board can waive that requirement. And in that discussion, and looking at the code, there is hesitation from the board on leaving the wetland disturbance permit as a condition of approval. And I'll let the board speak to this, but the discussion is that we'd like to see that application, we'd like to make sure that that application is reviewed and granted prior to voting on the resolution.
In point of fact, the actual language is, if you read it, the Planning Board in conjunction with a decision on an application, and I will leave out the subdivision in this case, they have to include granting of the permit as part of that resolution. So as a consequence, we need the complete and full application, including a simple wetland analysis, so that we can do a proper review, frame the findings that this board needs to make, and then identify any conditions. So unfortunately, we have a wonderful resolution, but we have to defer action on it.
Okay.
And I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. Saved me from having to, I guess, you know, break the news to you about the resolution tonight. So, I mean, that's, I think, from everything that we've had, everything's been submitted, I mean, it seems to be the only open-ended item here tonight.
Okay.
Is there a chance, I mean, unfortunately, our next meeting isn't until July the 15th, so is something that you can get submitted in time prior to that meeting, hopefully?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And I wasn't at the last meeting, obviously, so we haven't closed seeker yet either, correct?
No, the determination would be a part of the resolution.
Okay.
Which is another reason why it's very important for us to...
And the only reason why I ask that is just for the Health Department, they usually like to see a secret determination before...
They want to see a neck deck before you can move...
I'll talk to them, I might be able to get those plans into them, just knowing that that will eventually come, and it might be on our own risk of submitting those. I just want to get that process started.
Okay.
We know we have to go through that, so this, you know, this isn't really a deal breaker anyway, so...
Okay.
We'll get that report in as soon as possible.
All right. So as soon as we get, as soon as we get that, gets reviewed, you know, we'll, they said we'll put it on, you know, it'll be put on for the July 15 meeting, and then hopefully we can wrap things up at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for Al's Auto Repair. It's for amended site plan.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, might as well, I mean, obviously, I mean, we had, you heard for the conceptual going back.
Right, we went for the conceptual, we pretty much said that we had to have the site plan amended.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much where we were. We had a, you know, informal meeting or whatever, where somebody was, some, it was said that we could just do an overlay over the original site plan, so we had that done.
Well...
The guy that I'm working with had it done by the...
Yeah, I think there's a few, a few words in between that got left out was to get an architect or an engineer to, you know, to do that.
When I left the meeting, that was my understanding, so...
Yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood, I mean, maybe you can explain it to me better now?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're kind of at a, you know, I mean, we're kind of at a tough point, because a lot of missing information. We did, you know, I mean, you did receive the letter from the planner.
Yeah, yeah, about Friday afternoon, yeah, so, I mean, it's not like I had time to really look it over this weekend, you know, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, you had, you know, we had a couple of things that came in. One was from the planner. The other one, which I don't have with me, I believe the engineer wrote a short letter just asking for a lot more, looking for some more detail.
We got some comments from the county as well.
Huh?
We got some comments from the county as well.
And that's what I was gonna say, and I also have, Duchess County, who also had made some comments as well.
Okay.
Regarding it, so, you know, so there were, there's a bunch of things that needed to be addressed in the site plan.
I don't think I saw anything on that, from the county, what was said from the county?
So, the county had sent in a letter, you could have it if you want.
Sure.
It's a, so we're, you could come up and grab this, this is a, this is a referral form that we have to give the, that we have to give the county, and on the backside is a, is their responses to it. You could keep that, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have it, all right.
What is this, what are they involved in doing?
We're required to submit to them as well for comments.
Okay.
So, so they, you know, because of, you know, the site plan, location to a, it's your location in relevance to a state and county roadway.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what gives them, gives us the requirement to submit to them for comments.
Okay, so fill this out then, is what you're saying?
No, 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 there's nothing to fill out, that's just their response.
That's just their comments that we would then consider and...
The front, the front, the one side is the county's form that we submitted it to, you know, when we submitted it to them, and the backside just is the letter that they responded with. I just printed it front and back, it makes it easier for, less paper to print.
Okay.
All right.
So, pretty much what they're saying is they want a, a better site plan, is what it's coming down, says what it's coming down to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So that what didn't suffice, obviously, that's what I figured after getting the notice, the one that we had put forward.
Yeah, the one you have, the one, the one you have doesn't match what's actually on the site.
Okay.
I mean, we were, I mean, we were looking at what, you know, there's new parking areas, it's, you know, from what we, what was approved in the, you know, 1997 doesn't match what's physically there today, from, you know, looking at...
I mean, it really should, there's nothing really that's changed.
Nothing's changed, but the parking lot's larger. It's now paved versus, you know, item four, which is what the original site plan called for.
Okay, so that makes it, that's gonna make that really give a difference?
Right, so I mean, so it, yeah, it does, it makes, it does make some difference to it. The well on, the well on your site plan, you know, the well shows, it's, at least the one that was on the site plan you gave us...
Right, it's still...
Is now currently in the middle of the parking lot.
Well, that's the one that should be on that site plan, that's the same one, nothing's changed there.
Nothing's changed, okay, so, I mean, that's something you might want to, you know, address, but, I mean, why don't we, what, is these, why don't we go through, I'll have, unless the board, do any of the board members have any questions first?
No questions, no.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure, and what we'll do is, while we go through with the, the two letters that were produced, you had the one from the planner, and then the other was from the engineer, but I'll start with the planner.
Okay.
Okay, let's go through, you know, he, all the items he's looking for, you know, that need to be addressed.
Okay.
And we can go from there.
So the big one, I mean, there are a couple of different provisions in the special permit, we're modifying the existing special permit that you have. The conditions that pertain to towing are, a lot of them are going to be about where that impound lot is going to be in relation to certain setbacks and how it's going to be screened. So we're gonna need more information than what was provided, details on the fence that is proposed, the screening that's proposed, you know, dimensional callouts for where those trucks, those tow trucks are going to be stored, the narrative just sort of says that they're going to be stored along the fence, but the question would be where? Are you gonna have space for it? Is it gonna affect the, the rest of the parking on the site? The other question becomes about, you know, parking, how this is going to affect the overall parking calculation? I don't think it should, but it's...
It would probably be less than what was allotted for the trucks.
Yeah, it's just, it's tricky to tell because of the changes. When we look at aerial imagery versus the site plan that is proposed, the parking lot's different.
Okay.
Right? There's a different number of spaces, and the dimensions of it are different, and so it's difficult for us to tell whether or not these tow trucks are gonna have the kind of turning radius and clearance to get in and get back there, right?
Mm-hmm.
That, that speaks to item two on mine, which is the existing conditions, right? We need a, a more accurate site plan as far as what's there and what's being proposed. We talk about turning radii, we talk about lighting, I guess, information on what the existing lighting on the site is, and if there is new lighting that's going to be needed to create the secure area for the impound lot. So really, I mean, all of this to say, we need a, we need an engineer to prepare...
Be more an engineer of the site.
A real site plan, because at the end of the day, even, even if none of the, even if there had been no change from the original site plan to what currently exists, at the end of this, the chairman is going to need to sign the amended site plan, and he legally cannot do that unless it has been prepared by a certified engineer, with the certified engineer's signature on there, right?
Okay.
And so, the, the sketchup that we got provides some information, there's some that is missing, but if you hire an engineer to do it, I think a lot of that information will come much more easily. They, they prepare these plans, they know what we're looking to see.
Yeah, they do, yep, I got you.
Did you have anything?
Our comment, on our comment letter, was that we were basically deferring our review until you guys submit a site plan.
Okay.
Prepared by an engineer, just so we're not, you know, wasting anybody's time and...
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to waste my time of hiring a site engineer, I mean, does this look promising, or are we gonna come back here in a month and say, oh, well, no, we need this, this, and this?
So, the, everything that the, the board is telling you now, and what Malcolm is telling you now, it's basically that, from, to be able to make those determinations, we gotta step through the site plan requirements, it's all laid out in the code. You know, there's existing variances that were granted to the property that, you know, maybe they need to be adjusted if there's more impervious on the site, you know, so there's, there's certain things that they have to look at, and to be able to tell you what's needed, they need, they need a plan that shows what's there now versus what was approved, and then what are you looking to do. So, again, it's all, it's all laid out in, in the code, under the, the site plan ordinances, it's not anything that they're just coming out, you know, pulling from thin air, you know, show us this, show us that, so, and an engineer will be able to, to go through that, will be able to look at Malcolm's letter, and know, and look at the code, and say, okay, these, these are the, the items that we gotta address, and in that process, he may find something and let you know. There, there may be a hiccup here where we're over the impervious threshold, and all that means is you gotta talk to the board about it, and potentially, you know, go to the ZBA just to make it legal, you know, so there's different processes for this, to just make sure that the, the Planning Board, because the, the Planning Board needs to enforce what's in the town code, in, in the zoning code, you know, that's their job, and our job is to just help them do that from the technical part, the engineering and the, the planning side. So, if you get an engineer, they can obviously reach out to the town, work with Barbara, work with Malcolm, work with myself, you know, but a lot of those questions that you have are the same questions that we have, you know?
Okay.
You know, what are, what are the issues that could come up? And if, from what you submitted, we can't, we can't determine that. So, are you gonna be the one operating the, the tow?
No, I won't be the engineer.
Okay.
No.
Because one, one question that I had, that we were discussing before was just containment for any fluids, you know, because this is gonna be, if this is...
Yeah, we had talked about that at the conceptual meeting, and it's gonna be addressed as fast as we can address it, you know, just like anything would, would come, as it would come along, we would address it. And obviously, I have a well, I don't want the ground to contaminate, you know?
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
I don't want my property being devalued either, you know? We're gonna, if we have to, we'll pull it in the shop, we'll address it, we'll drain whatever fluids need to be drained out, you know, we'll put something underneath, whatever we have to do, you know? So it's my property, I own it, I don't want it to value, I don't want to ruin the war, so...
So are there, I guess the question is, are there standards, or any standard way that you guys would typically handle a situation like that, where, say it's an accident at 2:00 in the morning, and the car's all beat up, and you bring it back to the, the lot, and does it sit there till the morning, or do you have a mat and like...
Yeah, well, we could have a mat or a container or something, we throw underneath there for the time being, until we can get at it, you know?
Things like that, handled in, you know, in either a narrative, a detailed narrative to the, to the board, and on the plan, you know, notes on the plan, you know, talk to your engineer, tell him that, you know, we had this discussion, and we should include notes, you know, and he will probably want to pick your brain on, you know, what exactly do you guys do? Adding that information to the plan is great, so, because that, that gets ahead of these questions, and gives the board the ammunition that they need to, to give you an approval.
Okay. And then, as far as this Duchess County, I mean, I really didn't read through it too much, this is...
It's mostly, I, I read it, and it is mostly echoes of, of some of the things that I raised, one of them being the need for an official site plan, and the other being questions about lighting, existing lighting. They reference the code. My question is really, you know, like, what's, what's the existing lighting, but are you, are you gonna need more lighting?
Okay.
And how is that gonna affect the site? The other question, something, something to talk to your engineer about would be the size, the specs of the tow trucks that you're gonna use, right? Because you have a certain amount of parking and car storage, he's gonna talk to you about your, your visitor parking, your car storage, and all of those things, and then you're also going to want to make sure that the tow truck is able to access that impound lot, in terms of turning radii, assuming full occupancy of that, that parking area and that car storage. And so that's just something to, I mean, I'm sure that when you talk to your engineer, that would be one of the first things that he talks about, but that was something that our traffic engineers flagged, as far as turning radius, which, which of the two entrances are you gonna use?
Turning radius, I mean, we had a budget truck there, 24-foot budget trucks, and none of his trucks are gonna be bigger than a 24-foot budget truck.
Okay.
You know, we had the approval to have the budget trucks, we did that for, you know, 10, 15 years, no issues, so...
So they can get back there?
Yeah, it's not an issue there, I mean, what, what are we doing? We're putting up a fence with an enclosure on it, and maybe storing a couple of cars in there, so, I understand, you gotta go through the motions, it is what it is, you know, I just hope that everybody else is held to the same standard, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so...
Not true.
All right, I mean, I, I guess that's what it is, right? We have to go to the engineer and get that done, right?
Yes.
And that's where we stand now?
Get that, get them to, put it together, I mean, they've already got some, you already got some preliminary information to give them, you know, from the staff, let them put that together, resubmit it, you know, if that, if whoever you decide to hire does have some questions, again, they, you know, they could reach out to the, you know, professional staff, you know, in the office, you know, and, and say, hey, you know, I got a question about something, to help, you know, to help resolve the issue, because, you know, they weren't here tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to just do, I don't want to keep coming back and going back and forth with this, I'd like to just get it done, as probably everybody else would, right? Done with it and whatnot. I don't know, I had talked to Bobble, Bill Bobble as an engineer originally.
Bobble?
Yeah, I think that's his name, yeah, so, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that what you guys recommend and whatnot, as far as an engineer?
We don't, we don't recommend...
We don't recommend anybody, but we, we have worked with him in the past.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, I guess that answered the questions. That's it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, good evening. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review for Summit Bobcat Equipment Dealership.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm James Slaughter, working with Summit, and this is Colin McKevitt, he is the Vice President of Summit Bobcat, we're out of Walden, New York. We currently have a territory here in Duchess County, which we've had for many years, service of customers, towns, counties, or the county, and private businesses. We have been looking for a place to put a satellite dealership, we found one, it happens to be right down the street, Sergeant Palmetier Way, it's currently occupied by James, he owns a auto repair business.
Okay.
I believe he had another auto repair business renting from him at Pryor, which they have vacated. We put the narrative together for you in this packet.
Yeah.
And it explains basically what, who we are, and what we're looking to do. We have compact equipment, I mean, you probably know what Bobcat is, or, you know, many people that have construction companies know our brand. We also carry turf equipment, so ride on lawn mowers, and from commercial size down to residential size. So, we're looking to bring a smaller version of what we have in Walden to this county, to just service Duchess County. So, I, my question is, the existing building and their existing use, and looking in your, your zoning, just trying to figure out where it fits, I found two spots within your code, which is, I guess, assembly, finishing, repair products for retail sale, which is what we do currently.
You're doing sales and service, right?
Yeah, sales, service, we do rental, and we sell parts.
Yep.
So, and there's another, an under automotive, which, you know, automotive, you can look at it however you want to look at it, but...
Correct.
There's a, there's a vehicle rental use there as well.
So the, yeah, so the automotive end of it's more like a, you know, what's currently there, that, you know, repairing equipment, repairing the equipment's pretty much one of the same.
Sure.
I guess, but, but what you're, what you're proposing, it seems like a lot on a, on a little piece of property, this, you know, between, you know, if you're gonna do sales, so, I mean, you're gonna have, you know, just equipment there to show, obviously, so you have equipment displayed, you'll have equipment, you know, on-site to be repaired, and, you know, the rental, I guess rental equipment too, which is, you know, so...
Let me back up and take you through what we, our existing situation is, and so you can understand what we're trying to do.
Okay.
So we have a large dealership in Orange County, it's in Walden, New York, it's that kind of Jim Smith Chevrolet dealership, you guys might remember that. We have five acres of property there, we have nine bays that we use, utilize, we have, you know, Class A mechanics that repair. And so, many of the contractors here in Duchess County that do buy from us, their one reservation is crossing the bridge. And it, we feel that we, we can do a better job to service our customers if we're here in Duchess County. We don't need our whole crew here in Duchess County. We do need five folks here working for us, a salesperson, he can house there, a parts person who can also help with the service guys staying organized, maybe a mechanic or two in that, in that site. Myself to come over and make sure everybody's doing the right thing, and of course, Mr. McKevitt and his dad to come in as well and check on things. So, but the footprint, we, we don't require the five acres, that's why we look at this. We, we require a smaller footprint, because it is a satellite dealership. We don't need all of our lines there, we have them already in Walden. We have a delivery truck, which can pick up the largest piece of equipment that we have, except for one excavator. So, we can house the majority of what we need to house in Walden, but we can display the things that we choose to here in Waperters. Parts are really a concern of ours, the service department would be the high end, if we have bigger repairs, we would then transport over to Orange County where we can handle the bigger things. So, you know, this is more of a, we're here in Duchess, and we're here to help you guys, and we want to get you up and running as quick as possible, but you don't have to cross the bridge, you know?
Correct.
So, with that, would you say, I mean, because as you said, none of the special permits in the code sort of specifically address...
Right.
What you're looking to do?
Mm-hmm.
And in the pre-meeting, our conversation was very much the same thing, right? Which, what fits the best, right? And, because they're all, you dip into each of them a little bit, but each one of those special permits is gonna have a different set of criteria and different set of requirements. And so, based on what you're doing, would you, I mean, you, you've used the word dealership a couple of times, it sounds like the sale or the rental of equipment is something, is sort of the primary function of this satellite, and, and also what you're gonna be doing out of there is service work, more minor service work on that equipment as it comes in, and if it's a bigger job...
Yeah, we'll ship it.
You ship it back, bring it back to your larger facility where you've got more of your equipment and more of your staff.
I would say, I, I think parts would be...
Parts would be big, the retail element?
The retail element of the parts.
Just use the, make sure you use the...
Sorry, yeah, the retail element of the parts would be, the, where you would see the most customer volume.
Okay. So there's gonna be a certain amount of sales and rental of larger equipment, there's gonna be a certain amount of service being done, but for the most part, you've got your customers who already have your product coming in and out day to day, looking for very specific parts.
Sure. Would you agree? I'd agree with that, and I would add that from a sales and rental standpoint, being on, you know, the industrial construction model as opposed to, you know, your car dealership, most of that largely actually happens in the field. So that would be occurring, and it's kind of, we're doing that already in this area, but it's, it's in the field.
Okay. And as far as inventory that you're holding on lot, the sales and the rental, you're gonna have a certain amount of equipment there to show, but if somebody comes in and they're looking to buy or rent a Bobcat, it's probably getting delivered to them from your main facility?
Potentially. Yeah, the option's there.
Or, or it's, or it's this model, and then you ship another one from your main facility to replace it, as far as what's available to show.
Right, you sell, sell model A, bring our model A back, and, you know, assemble it, and sell it.
Okay. This, this is an interesting...
Yeah, there's a lot, there's, yeah, from the...
Because there's definitely gonna be components.
From the premium, there is definitely a little, yeah, it's a little more than what we, a little more than what the application led on to.
There's gonna be components of at least two different special permits, plus the retail component. But for sure, we are deviating from the previous use, this is gonna be a new use.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I mean, it's a tight piece of...
We also carry turf equipment, so ride on lawn mowers and from commercial size down to residential size. So, we're looking to bring a smaller version of what we have in Walden to this county to just service Dutchess County. So, my question is, the existing building and their existing use, and looking in your zoning, just trying to figure out where it fits. I found two spots within your code, which is, I guess, assembly, finishing, repair products for retail sale, which is what we do currently.
You're doing sales and service, right?
Yeah, sales, service. We do rental, and we sell parts.
Yep.
So, there's another, under automotive, which, you know, automotive, you can look at it however you want to look at it, but there's a vehicle rental used there as well.
So, the automotive end of it's more like, you know, what's currently there, that, you know, repairing equipment and repairing the equipment's pretty much one and the same.
Sure.
I guess, but what you're proposing, it seems like a lot on a little piece of property. This, you know, between, you know, if you're going to do sales, so, I mean, you're going to have, you know, just equipment there to show, obviously. So, you have equipment displayed, you'll have equipment, you know, on site to be repaired, you know, the rental, I guess rental equipment too, which is, you know, so...
Let me back up and take you through what our existing situation is, and so you can understand what we're trying to do.
Okay.
So, we have a large dealership in Orange County. It's in Walden, New York. It's that Jim Smith Chevrolet dealership. You guys might remember that. We have five acres of property there. We have nine bays that we use, utilize. We have, you know, Class A mechanics that repair. And so, many of the contractors here in Dutchess County that do buy from us, their one reservation is crossing the bridge. And we feel that we can do a better job to service our customers if we're here in Dutchess County. We don't need our whole crew here in Dutchess County. We do need five folks here working for us, a salesperson that he can house there, a parts person who can also help with the service guys staying organized, maybe a mechanic or two in that site, myself to come over and make sure everybody's doing the right thing, and of course, Mr. McCavitt and his dad to come in as well and check on things. So, but the footprint, we don't require the five acres. That's why we look at this. What we require a smaller footprint because it is a satellite dealership. We don't need all of our lines there. We have them already in Walden. We have a delivery truck, which can pick up the largest piece of equipment that we have, except for one excavator. So, we can house the majority of what we need to house in Walden, but we can display the things that we choose to here in Waperters. Parts are really a concern of ours. The service department wouldn't be the high end if we have bigger repairs. We would then transport over to Orange County where we can handle the bigger things. So, you know, this is more of a, we're here in Dutchess and we're here to help you guys and we want to get you up and running as quick as possible, but you don't have to cross the bridge, you know?
So, with that, would you say, I mean, because as you said, none of the special permits in the code sort of specifically address what you're looking to do? And in the pre-meeting, our conversation was very much the same thing, right? Which, what fits the best, right? And because they're all, you dip into each of them a little bit, but each one of those special permits is going to have a different set of criteria and different set of requirements. And so, based on what you're doing, would you, I mean, you've used the word dealership a couple of times. It sounds like the sale or the rental of equipment is something, is sort of the primary function of this satellite? And also, what you're going to be doing out of there is service work, more minor service work on that equipment as it comes in, and if it's a bigger job?
Yeah, we'll ship it.
You ship it back, bring it back to your larger facility where you've got more of your equipment and more of your staff?
I would say, I think parts would be...
Parts would be big, the retail element?
The retail element of the parts.
Just use the, make sure you...
Sorry, yeah, the retail element of the parts would be where you would see the most customer volume.
Okay. So, there's going to be a certain amount of sales and rental of larger equipment. There's going to be a certain amount of service being done, but for the most part, you've got your customers who already have your product coming in and out day to day, looking for very specific parts.
Sure.
I'd agree with that, and I would add that from a sales and rental standpoint, being on, you know, the industrial construction model as opposed to, you know, your car dealership, most of that largely actually happens in the field. So, that would be occurring, and it's kind of, we're doing that already in this area, but it's in the field.
Okay. And as far as inventory that you're holding on lot, the sales and the rental, you're going to have a certain amount of equipment there to show, but if somebody comes in and they're looking to buy or rent a Bobcat, it's probably getting delivered to them from your main facility?
Potentially. Yeah, the option's there.
Or it's this model, and then you ship another one from your main facility to replace it as far as what's available to show?
Sell model A, bring out model A back, and assemble it and sell it.
This is an interesting...
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah, from the previous, from the previous, there is definitely a little, yeah, it's a little more than what we, a little more than what the application led on to.
Two different special permits plus the retail component. But for sure, we are deviating from the previous use. This is going to be a new use.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I mean, it's a tight piece of property. I mean, you do realize that the property doesn't continue back into that, you know, to where that pond is, correct? I mean, and a portion of your back of your property is within a wetland buffer as well.
I would say, I mean, assume that the wetland buffer extends all the way to the back of the existing building.
Is that a New York state or is it a federal?
It's federal, but our town code describes both federal and state wetlands as town wetlands, and our town wetlands have a 100-foot buffer.
Okay, so it's the same as a state wetland?
Yes. So, it itself is a federal wetland, but the town wetland buffer extends as far as the rear of that building. And the property line cuts across a little less than half of what would appear from aerial imagery is sort of being used as the back of that property. As far as the lot dimensions, I think that in many ways, it does not comply with the current zoning regulations as far as frontage, lot size, setbacks, things like that. And so, if the building itself were to remain, only some of those would be of issue. But if you wanted to modify that building, modify the footprint of that building, you would very quickly run into issues with setback variances, the need for setback variances. Because I believe it is existing non-conforming. And so, you know, there is the one issue of how do we define this as far as the special permit in the town code, and then the other runs into the issue of, you know, the constraints that exist on the property for you moving forward with it. Some things to note just before we get into which special permit would apply. There are restrictions, things like the number of display vehicles that are permitted along the frontage of a property. That is restricted. You can only have one every 40 feet, which for your frontage, you know, the image that you gave us in the packet would not be a possibility along that frontage. That is something to keep in mind.
That would be the image of our current dealership, right?
Okay, the five vehicle, which is not the operation that you're proposing. I just wanted to make that clear, right? That would be one of the conditions of any special permit that we would move forward. I mean, I think that with any submission, should you choose to move forward, we would need to get a very detailed narrative as far as operations to try and figure out what special permit path you should follow. And we would all need to do a lot of research into our own code to try and help figure out what that path should look like. Unfortunately, we don't have a clear answer for you right now as to which special permit it makes sense for you to pursue, or which, whether one would be necessary, right? Because it sounds like a lot of your business is retail. Do any of the other consultants have comments?
I think just summarize what Bruce was really getting at and what Malcolm is talking about, just making sure that you guys, and I mean, obviously, you guys have looked at this, you've submitted some good information and given the board a lot to look at as far as what you're looking to do. The thing that threw us a little bit was the image of your Walden site and wondering if that was what you were hoping to get here, because, and what Kevin was saying is that it's just a small site, so...
It would be simple for that, though. We would buy a dealership then. We would go buy an existing dealership somewhere else and pack it, but we don't need a packet. We just need a presence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Need an address.
We want folks to come to here, to not travel so far to come get their parts.
Exactly.
Really. And we want folks to, that maybe not buy from us because we're a little farther away, to come buy from us.
Yeah.
So, that's really what we're doing. Otherwise, why spend the money?
So, part of your narrative should really be, what primarily do you think is going to be the major use of the properties? It could mostly be retail with some rentals or purchasing, you know?
So, I would love to give you the answer, but I don't have the exact answer, but I can speak a little bit. But that's cool to say that parts is a main source of revenue for us in our current situation. So, that's going to be the same here.
It's going to be the focus here.
We're going to do the, the business is the same business. It's just the quantity of business that we do with parts is going to probably be the highest part here.
Well, I mean, this is just an idea and something for you to consider. And I also don't know how viable it is without doing a little bit of research, and I'm sure that you'll do research as well. But as you're putting together a full submission, if you want to look at trying to minimize or eliminate the element of the proposed business here as far as sales and rental, and focus on parts, and focus on taking stuff that's really going to need to get serviced and bringing it back to Walden, or, you know, making a sale here but not selling it from the lot, making the sale here and then trucking out that equipment from Walden, I think that would really simplify this and set it apart from auto body dealership or auto body service and establish it much more as a retail operation that has access to service and sales and rental that we can hook you up with. Again, I would want to do more reading about that, but that is an idea.
Right. Along with that idea, we, you know, we would be kind of a disservice to ourselves if we didn't have a machine or machines in our, in that building.
Something to look at.
I think the building is big for us. We don't, you know, we would house things inside it. We would have a parts counter there, or we would put machines inside for people to come in, especially on a rainy day, they come in and check out your stuff, they buy some parts. Again, we don't have enough room there to service everything. We can't put everything there in that lot. So, the intention is, I think, we're all trying to figure out where paths cross, and I think we're all talking the same language. I just think we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot by not being allowed to put a machine in our showroom, you know, or have, you know, a 40-foot roll outside, that's fine too.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I can't speak for the board, but I think that it's very reasonable as a satellite that is focusing on part sales, for you to have an example of the machinery that people are coming in to get parts for, right? Whether that's in the showroom or one out front by the sign.
Right.
I think that's very different than the initial image that we all saw, which was the Walden lot, right? I mean, that's your inventory lot.
Look at it, yeah, you want to keep it to scale. You want to kind of scale it to what's going to fit on the property and not just have like, you know, wall equipment on it, you know? And to boot, you know, the other thing is keeping in mind too is having a location on the property to load and unload equipment. That's going to be the other thing, because you're going to be bringing stuff in and out of there. You can't just, you know, park out in the street and kind of, you know, run a machine out on the road and then drive it up onto the trailer.
Yeah, we have rollbacks.
Yeah.
And we have small utility trailers. So, if we come in, if it's us moving it, it's easy. We also, not that dealership, we also have material handling dealerships, so we have four of them. So, we need something for, we can do that as well. Our intention was never to unload on the street.
Okay.
And not, we don't want to do that.
Okay, that's one of those things that comes up every time we deal with a, you know, with an auto dealer or things like that. It's just, you know, everything ends up on, everything ends up, you know, happening on the road where it's not supposed to.
We're accountable for safety, you know? So, it's different in our world, I think, than out in the public there. We make sure that our people are first, and we can't do things like that.
All right. Any of the board have any questions?
I was just thinking, along the lines of, the principal use is kind of retail and sales, whether some of these other uses can be treated as accessory. Not sure how the zoning actually defines that, but it would limit those kinds of uses to a certain portion of the physical lot of business.
Right.
We have to see how it all, you know, meshes together, but I don't think, like I said, it's, for us, it's not, we know what we're, we know what we're getting into, we know it's not Walden shop, and it's, it really needs to happen for our customers to see us there, to be able to go there and grab and keep going back to work. That's the biggest hurdle we run for them.
Sort of, more so to just have a presence in the area, that type of thing?
Our sales guy, Adam, will be out in the field, you know, knocking on doors, you know, does what the sales guys do like that. So, he's not sitting there displaying, you know, demoing that nonstop in our yard. He's out. And a lot of times, folks will ask us to take a look at a piece of shit or you can take those out to their job site. They try it out there, because what they're going to do in our yard, you know?
Right, right, exactly.
And the other thing I think is, once you get all that figured out, is a real good plan of what this building's going to look like, because what's there now looks not so hot, and, you know, landscaping plan, all that.
Anybody else have any questions for us? So, I think, I mean, I think you've got, I don't know, if we've answered all the questions, you're looking to get answered tonight. But if you haven't, I mean, the next step would be is to come back with a, you know, full submission, put a site plan together, you know, and, you know, basically showing us, you know, how you're going to make this work on the property you have.
Sure. Do you, I heard the other gentleman that was here, do you need the site plan engineer in stand?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It should come from an engineer, should have him develop the plan for you, have him put all the required information on there, you know, meeting all the, you know, for the parking calculations, you know, also showing how you're going to, you know, keep the machinery around the property and still be able to get, you know, in and out to the back of the building when you need to, you know, that type of thing. So, and also meeting any buffers that are required on each side, you know, if there's a residential property adjacent, there's a, you know, there's a buffer requirement, so... Yep. All right. Okay.
We'll be back.
Cool, thanks.
I didn't even say that like I'm on a lunch. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is Summit Bobcat Equipment Dealership. Oh, sorry, wrong, we already just did that one. My mistake, I'm reading the wrong line here. Next one is Howell's Construction amended site plan.
Good evening. Doug LaParche, Doe Trail Properties, 1597 Route 376. We are here at the request of the building department in an effort to get a change of occupancy. We are not asking for any amendment to a site plan. We are not asking for any variances. We are just asking to have a change of occupancy for the potential new buyers that are in a purchase agreement at this point. You've been asked to provide pictures of what they will be doing on the property. They presently are leasing space next door from Sunup Industries. They are moving from one side of the fence to the other with the understanding that they are not doing anything different than they're doing on the property next door, which we believe the zoning is the same. Their intention is to continue the renovations that we've started on both the rear building and then increase the renovations to the front buildings in order to make office space for a minimum number of employees to work out of there at office space, same as what we had under our occupancy when we applied for it in 2022. So, again, the only thing we've been, we're here for is to, at the request of the building department, is a change of occupancy, which we haven't had to do before, but we're here.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
That seemed pretty good.
Seems okay.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. Any board members have any, I mean, this was previously equipment storage in the past? You have any need to, pretty clear cut?
Are there cargo containers there?
No. Next property over, Kevin Lund's property.
That's the next property you're on.
Correct.
So, the big issue why they were here, I met with the father and the son, was the previous site plan did not allow outdoor storage, their excavators. But I guess what I wanted clarified, obviously trucks are fine, but if they're going to have material or parts of trucks or anything, that would need an amended site plan.
Have the outdoor storage, have the outdoor storage of excavators.
So, a lot of materials?
Any material?
What, you know, anything to them?
We wouldn't have any of that. We just want our trucks there and machines, you know, and hopefully the machines ain't there, you know, unless they need to be repaired or whatever. Dirt and stuff, it's just...
So, there's no type of bill being brought in, no parts being stored?
So, just for machinery then? Machinery and trucks? Okay.
I gave you some pictures of basically Doug LaParche's pork or equipment.
Right, that's why I questioned, because there's storage containers on some of those pictures.
Yeah, it's not like the, what's the property around the corner? The one that Sunup, that they used to own?
Oh, right, that's the one on, you know, Hackensack and...
Yeah, that was the one, that's where he had all his materials and stuff was on that, on that side over there.
Skelton bought, Jared Bombin Skelton bought that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, okay, but you're not doing it here, obviously you don't have enough room to do any of that stuff. I mean, it's very tight.
And we maintain invested interest. We're holding a mortgage, my wife and I, for the house to purchase the property, so we maintain invested interest in seeing the property continue to be renovated and, you know, continue what we started.
Okay. All right, and was on the renovation work, I mean, was the permit taken out and stuff?
Yes. Yeah, so now what he's saying tonight would just be a change of occupant.
Just a change of occupant?
Right.
Okay.
And the renovation, we have permits for everything you're doing there.
So, you just have to follow through and complete the work that was previously...
If they want to amend anything, once they own it, they can do that through the building department.
Okay. Okay, so with that, motion for that, let's make a motion to approve the change in occupant on the property.
And it's a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
So, what, under what provision are we doing this?
Basically existing, well, we have an existing property, right, right?
I'm asking a code question.
Yeah.
What are we, what are we doing here? It's not a site plan, it's not a special permit, it's not?
So, they came because from what I was told, I thought there would be some outdoor storage, so...
Storage, yeah.
It seems cleaner and more cut and dried tonight, so technically, they don't need your approval for anything.
There's no, yeah, there's no outdoor storage materials and things like that. That was, that was the concern.
Should go right to the building department?
So, it's basically, you got a company now, where there was a company that did have some, yeah, mostly trucks on that site, right? They had the equipment, but the previous person, previous company prior to his was Tutsavale Esport, yeah, and they had all kinds, they had equipment and trucks on the site, so there's really no change in the use, there's no...
We don't need to do anything.
No, but it was the assumption that something was going to change, so it's basically, as long as it goes on the record that they're going to go ahead and just put our equipment and trucks on the property, that's, that's all we're approving tonight, as per the previous approvals. Okay, so with that, the motion was made?
Wait, 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 wait.
No, no motion, no.
No?
No. No motion.
No motion.
No action.
That's for action. All right.
They came, they came with the understanding that they may need an amended site plan through discussion.
So, basically, everybody, so basically, just everybody in agreement that they don't need to turn around and have to apply for a site plan approval?
Okay.
With the understanding the building department is going to grant a change of occupancy for...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night. All right. All right, next item on the agenda is MLC Smithtown Properties LLC.
Good evening, Brian Watts here from Days to Co's Engineering. We're here because the applicant is seeking to subdivide their existing parcel when they purchase... purchased this. This was a unified one lot, the description has this as one meets bound descriptions and then references two tax map parcels, one being in the town of Fishkill, one in town of Wapengers. The lots on the corner of.
Down in South.
Yes.
There was an error in the call.
Smithtown Road and Cedar Hill. Cedar Hill. And in trying to subdivide this, the existing improvements include a accessory garage and the well for the existing structures on the town of Wapengers side. And in trying to subdivide off the Wapengers side for a single family residence, the Fishkill side is going to need, still need access to that well and that garage. So the existing parcel is outlined in green and we're looking to subdivide off the pink, the pink lot for, to sell and have a future home. And the yellow lot is going to be what's left over if we're trying to provide that well and that garage for the existing Fishkill lot. So it's, it's a little bit of an odd duck in that.
I'm confused, which is the Fishkill, which is the Wapenger? Could you just?
Pink is Fishkill.
Fishkills?
Oh, that's.
Wapenger, this is the.
Line nearly cuts it right in half and the, the line goes in between the cottage and in between the garage and the well, which was a replacement well for the original dug well. It's just, just over as well. So if we were to subdivide this off, we're left with a little triangle that's going to end up with its, its own tax map number because of, because of the municipality boundary. There's not, you know, the intention is that that's just going to stay part of the Fishkill lot.
Makes sense.
We're trying, you know, we want to make sure there's not going to be any kind of, you know, it is a substandard lot. I mean, if, when that gets its own tax, tax map number, there's, it's not going to have enough area, frontage, so on and so forth, but.
Couldn't be anything. You're looking to take one building lot with two tax lot numbers?
Yes.
And turn it into two building lots that have three tax numbers?
Yes.
Are you going through the same process in Fishkill? Have you begun that process in Fishkill?
My understanding is they said they wouldn't have to be involved with this application?
They would defer.
Defer to Wapengers?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need documentation of that.
But this is a two lot, it's just, you're, you're really just creating one lot.
Creating one lot and the leftover.
Well, one, one lot, the, there, as a result of it, there will be an odd tax ID, but it's not a lot, it's not, it's not a lot.
It's not a building lot as defined by town code.
Okay.
It is three tax parcels and two building lots.
I mean, the easy fix for that was, would be to make sure that they can't be sold separately by the deed descriptions.
Okay.
And I guess by whatever conditions of the approval.
Yeah. So that would be in any hypothetical resolution down the line?
Okay. I hope the board helps is.
Is.
Agree, is agreeable, is, is.
It is, it is tricky.
Makes sense to us here, but you know, the board helps, the board helps.
The existing well currently services.
Yes.
The existing well is currently in Wapengers and it currently services buildings in the town.
Yes.
So I, I agree. I, I also hope that they're amenable to this, but the new lot is wholly within Wapengers.
Absolutely.
And code compliant. So I think that once you explain it to them just that way.
Have you talked to them yet? Are you, are you?
I think Brian Stokozan may have reached out. I'm not sure if he got an answer yet.
Okay.
Because it's so preliminary and.
Yeah.
Everyone's busy season.
So even if the town of Fishkill doesn't need you to go before them, won't they still have to sign the Mylar because it's affecting both towns?
I guess if they're wholly deferring in writing to Wapengers, that would be some.
Probably not. File the Mylar at the county if only Bruce has signed it.
If it's, that's something I would have to bring before the town of Fishkill.
I'd get that answer before you.
In writing. Or just the Building Department.
I'd talk to the clerk, too. I would talk to the county clerk.
Yeah.
Make sure that, like.
Head of time for it.
You don't go through all this.
You don't get that far, you're going to have to go back.
Right.
That's just a full written sign off, no interest.
That would be a deferment.
Deferment, I'm looking, thank you, I was losing my words there, I just couldn't.
I'd be surprised if the Health Department has an issue.
Yeah, I think that.
I'm surprised if they don't come back with at least 10 comments.
Well, yeah.
Well, I didn't say that.
Of course. But you may, yeah, you may have them scratching their heads, but I think that once it is made clear.
I'm hoping a good narrative that at least referenced in Smithtown Road would go a long way as opposed to All Angels.
Yeah, that's a good place to start.
I'm assuming we wrote the next letter and just copied and pasted in, you know, four eyes, three and a half, somewhere in there. I don't know if the board has any other questions, I don't think I have any.
No, I, I, I mean, I think, I mean, I understand the principle behind what you're looking to do there, so as long as attorney feels it's, you know, that it's acceptable, which again, I guess there's, you know, parcels like that all across the county, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, anybody else have anything? No? No. Okay. All right.
No, I think that idea of the condition that the.
That they can't be sold separately?
That that little lot cannot be sold separate from the.
You could put that on the deed.
It can be included in the deed on the plan notes and as a condition of any potential approval.
Won't it be deeded as a single lot? And there'll be a separate?
I think so.
Yeah, but you would have the description with both tax.
Yeah.
Lots included.
It would be included in it. I mean, it's, it's.
You'd have to file the deed anyway.
It's only confusing because we use the word lot in both places, but.
Right.
The town building lot has a separate definition than a tax parcel.
Right, it's just an additional, it's just technically, it's an additional tax ID number for that.
I mean, you see it all the time with like old farms and a new town road that goes through it and you've got one tax ID on one side of the road and one on the other, but they're the same lot.
Right.
And it's, you know, it's confusing and it, it throws you for a loop because you're like, wait, isn't, is this a site plan with two lots? No, they're, it's the same building lot. It pre, it predates the road, but we changed the legal description of it and created a new tax ID because we took land from them to create that right of way. So, but yes, we'll make it abundantly clear in all the places.
You see those hooks on file maps?
Exactly.
Where they go across the road. We have, one of DCH's, there's a hook and it's both one lot, but the road goes through it. And even Sergeant.
Exactly.
They already did it, I thought.
Yeah.
Comes up.
Yes.
It's always a nice one, a conceptual goes this smooth. I think you all agree?
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess it sounds like you've pretty much got all your, you know, all the information you need. I guess it's just a matter of coming back with a full submission. Just doing a little bit of, just doing a little bit of legwork with the town of Fishkill.
And the Health Department.
The Health Department, too, yeah.
Go have this conversation with all of them and we'll see you back.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I can stand here for the next application.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So I could say I'm.
Yeah, your office also did the Telegroso subdivision.
Yes.
Which is looking, so looking for a 290-day extensions on a subdivision application. So how much is still working through the?
I believe it's the Health Department approvals? I believe so, yes.
Okay, that's, I'm just reading the description real quick, so it looks like that's what they're asking for. If granted, the extension will begin July 10th, 2024 and run through January 9th, 2025. Anybody have any questions regarding the extension?
Are those, they actually have been enough? Is that enough of an extension?
Yeah, I mean, they're still working on it. I mean, this has just been.
Let me just say.
This, we just reapproved not that long ago.
Yeah, I know.
This is that one that was.
I know what you're doing.
Eight, 10 years old and then it came back again. But yeah, I think that's, I mean, they're, if they're working with the Health Department, then just finalizing whatever with them.
I'll make the motion to, for the 290-day extensions.
I'll second that.